Tuesday. Evening, our first item of business will be the Downtown Milwaukee Business Association, which will be introduced by Austin Wicks and I believe Rory Dunback will be. The main presenter. Welcome.
Right, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Allison Wicks. I'm the Development Project Manager with the City of Milwaukee and I'm here with Rory. Rory, if you want to introduce yourself.
I do. Thank you, Allison. Yeah, Rory Dunback here. I'm the President currently of the Downtown Milwaukee Business Association.
And we're here to give the DMBA quarterly update. So with that, I'll hand it over to Rory.
Great, thanks, Allison. Great to see everyone doing well and in good spirits. I know it's a trying time out there. I do want to spend a few minutes kind of recapping a few things since our last meeting and then kind of share some things going forward that we could really use some help with. So currently, you know, unfortunately with the smoke, it's it's really hard, especially for our restaurants in town. Yeah, as many of you probably could understand, you know, the outdoor seating has been sort of the linchpin that's kept our wonderful restaurants going and the smoke has sort of acted like, you know, almost like rain, right, keeping people away. So we'll come back to that in just just a few moments. Love the skateboarding work that we did, Allison, put a lot of effort into that. And, you know, when we do get back to hosting First Fridays again, I look forward to highlighting highlighting that in our in our events. You know, I think that's the biggest thing right now, events. And how do we sort of think about planning for our events? You know, we really can't. But there's some hypotheticals that we can put into place. You know, in my opinion, our business community thrives, especially from our events, brings new people downtown, it brings a lot of our residents together and it really celebrates the great city and brings business business to the business community. So really, we didn't get a chance to meet in August, so I don't have really an updated feel other than, you know, my time spent downtown. You know, a couple of updates. I know the daycare, Sunshine Daycare, has a huge grant to expand the daycare operations, which is something I'm really passionate, really excited to see how my son goes to daycare over there. So that's great. She's building an indoor play park right next to the daycare center there on 21st. So you'll see some construction going on there. And we used to be Molly Muriel. I think she's now operating out of her home. So that space there would be interesting to see how it gets developed. Let's see, Ovation Bar, I don't know, since I've been back, Ovation Bar has opened, another wonderful addition to the Downtown Milwaukee business community. Their ownership is really passionate about participating. So if you haven't got a chance to visit them, I know they're either recently opened their bar or about to, and they have great, great seating there. Seems like, you know, little things like petty crime still continues to plague our businesses around town, things like smashing windows. As you kind of look around, you'll see boards from time to time. I think Chase Bank was a recent victim. Their upper window has a board in front of it. So that's something that we continue to be on the lookout. I know, talking to my fellow business owners, we try to do things like some sort of cameras or ring door bells and things like that. And, you know, and the bigger things too, just, you know, hats off to the Milwaukee Police Department because they've really responded and been great partners in helping to bring some of the vandals and things. And so it's been really a great partnership. We appreciate that because I know a lot of people say if we were in downtown Portland, that probably would not be the same response. I know nothing about downtown Portland's policing, but I'm really thankful to live here and have that partnership. Let's see. So, you know, going forward, a couple of big things that obviously were were still kind of in in limbo and probably are going to be canceled, it'd be the trick or treat for Halloween. I don't foresee being able to pull off that event. But if I did, foresee it, and, you know, it worked within the parameters, what we're given to keep everybody healthy, healthy and safe, safety, then we would certainly try to figure that out. Passing out candy, given the circumstances, the virus has passed out, doesn't seem like a very good idea, but it does bring a lot of joy to our city. And so there's ever a way to pull it off, given the new criteria. That's what we'll be talking about at our next meeting coming up here in a few weeks at the end of September. And then, you know, that leads nicely into our winter events, which I'm already starting to think about, you know, how do we pull off the winter solstice? How do we pull off the umbrella parade, things like that, bringing so much business to our city and, you know, our great events for holiday shopping. Don't know how to pull those off, but we're, you know, want to speak with you, the council, to find out, you know, if you've you've had any thoughts on on that. And yeah, so those are those are some of the topics that I'm currently working through with my leadership team. Many of you know that our leadership team with our secretary Denise, Denise moved. She moved over to the Hope River area. So we're very thankful for all the time and effort she she helped us with. So we're short a little bit in our leadership team and she was our secretary. And so we're actively looking for another business owner to step up and and help us there. And I'm sure that we will. I think as business owners, we've all been a little busy kind of trying to keep our businesses going. And so it's been it's been a bit of slow, slow going to get the group together. Our July meeting wasn't super well attended. You know, we had eight or 10 businesses that that did join us that are kind of the standards in town. So yeah, so those are those are a little bit of updates about where the the group is as a whole. And I've seen many of our business owners, I know Mayor Gambler, you've asked me in the past, you know, please report back if, you know, PC people struggling. I'm sure people are, but they're not showing it. You know, I think that the brave faces, the people who are business owners in this town, you know, they're knee deep in hard work. And, you know, I saw a lot of people, including Bill, who owns the bowling alley down the street here at the Chamber Golf Outing recently. And, you know, I think he's talking about packing up and selling, but he's still positive outlook on the bowling alley reopening. And then, you know, a lot of the other business owners has been really busy. I haven't got a chance to talk to each and every one of them as I oftentimes do as I stroll stroll around. But it kind of is, gives you at least a pulse on the town. I'll just kind of pause here and I'm open to questions or if you want to respond to any of the ideas.
I just wanted to say thank you, Rory, for continuing to show up consistently for the downtown business community. I really, I really appreciate your positivity and your leadership in what are trying times for everyone and especially trying times for our small businesses. I don't, I hope you feel like you make a difference. I don't know if you do, but I think you make a difference and and I'm really grateful for your presence. I don't know, I I'm not personally, I can't speak for everyone. I don't, I don't know that we can really do our winter events. I haven't seen much indication that that things are going to change in a way that makes it safe for us to do things like parades or the solstice gathering. And it breaks my heart to say that because I can't think of anything that would be better for us right now as a community to than to just get to do that. But I I would love to be wrong and I I stand here here. If anyone would like to correct me or say something different, please jump in and do so.
I'm afraid you're probably right. All the reading I'm doing has, you know, vaccines starting to get distributed sometime at best, you know, mid-winter and and, you know, a year out before they're widely enough distributed that we've actually curtailed this pandemic. So I don't, I don't see large gatherings of that nature occurring before that.
I mean, maybe we can take some, I mean, I can't think of anything more pleasant than standing in the rain under an umbrella right now. So.
Air that you can breathe.
Some version, you know, that that maybe is similar to Porch Fest, you know, maybe taking on a different format, sort of building on that model might be something that I that I would, I think that this community would really rally around.
Yeah, I had the same idea that maybe there's a, the the solstice event seems to me, I don't know, any way to do it because there's just so many people in one place. But the umbrella parade, maybe there's a way to have a social socially distant umbrella parade and just not have the gathering part in front of St. Paul that we traditionally end with, you know?
Yeah, and I was thinking something similar as I was, you know, the other day driving up the street and remembering that, you know, the the Davis graveyard is not going to be happening this year. So perhaps showing them some love and support by by maybe trying to do a little satellite, you know, I mean, people, people are going to haunt, right? You know, no matter what.
They are happening. They're just not happening in their usual place. They're happening at the Plaquemines County Fair.
Yeah, yeah. But here in Milwaukee, it's a.
Yeah, institution.
Yes, yep, so.
You know, I love that you're already thinking about, you know, how and not giving up. I mean, that Kathy, thank you for your kind words. And, you know, the the hope is what business owners need right now. We need the creativity that we have in this town to come together and and think and and think of ways, you know, I can see that the restaurants are full when we're not full of smoke, right? They're full outside, they're full at each table that they cannot possibly seat inside. My concern is now it starts raining, you know, they can't sustain it, right? And I've always said that the culture of our town is sort of hinged on our wonderful, you know, kind of nightlife or restaurant scene, if you will. You know, bringing people, that kind of creates more activities and emotions and brings more people to town, you know, as I often see on on Sundays when we're so busy down here. So how do we replicate that? I guess that's the question, you know, and the question I'm thinking about, and I just hope to inspire, you know, us all to think strategically, and Porch Fest was a great example, you know, every time I I haven't got a chance to see it, but every time I tune into Facebook, it looks just like a wonderful event that brings joy and and the creativity out. I don't know how businesses can leverage that, right? You know, I can't necessarily set up a hot dog stand in the middle of, you know, at least your neighborhood, in the middle of Porch Fest. Much as some businesses would probably thrive doing something like that. But we we do have to think, you know, uniquely and and I'll challenge the businesses too, you know, we, Allison and I, you know, thought about, you know, how do we, how could we better leverage, you know, Sunday Farmer's Market, although the season's coming kind of close to an end here, you know, could we possibly extend the, you know, the no car zone, right, the the streets? And, you know, it's a wonderful idea. And, you know, there, other than me, who my business really doesn't make that much of a difference for my business, but I would love to do it for other people's businesses, but there isn't people that really want to step up and work. That's a ton of work to put something like that on. So that piece is still missing from, you know, our ability as a group and downtown business owners to how to how to execute that effectively. So that's my job is to try to actually bring people together to have those discussions to see who, you know, if we were to put something like that on and get the permissions to do so, you know, that's, that's the piece that's sort of missing right now.
I did just want to jump in real fast and give Kelly a chance to respond, since it's her team who works on the events.
Sure.
Hi, yeah, thank you for bringing it up. And I'm glad that I had a chance to hear you kind of talk through this in the meeting. I appreciate that. Yeah, my team is actually the one that kind of one we're working through right now to kind of an ongoing triage of what events can and can't happen. And so we're now at the fall and winter events. The first thing we're trying to work through is even though it's not necessarily been a city run event, but the scarecrow contest, what can and can't happen with respect to scarecrows. And then heading into our two biggest events outside of Carefree Sundays are the umbrella parade and solstice, as you mentioned. I don't know what's possible. We will need to make sure that whatever happens can be done in compliance with the guidelines and we won't know what those are. The team has already started trying to brainstorm different, you know, we could do mini, mini umbrella decorating, you know, what what are some ways that you can still provide opportunities for people to engage? We'll be talking more about that. And we're doing an update on all things community engagement in October. So we'll talk more then. Depending on what we learn, we may be releasing information earlier than that if we can, at least about what we do believe is possible and what's not possible. I would like to underscore kind of, I think, I think it was Council Beatty that said, solstice is difficult. That's a big crowd. That's the whole, that's the whole thing. So that one is pretty challenging. But we're looking at it. We'll come back with more information. And I appreciate the chance just hearing you all talk it through. And I wanted to just kind of let you know who I am. So as you continue to work with Allison, if you need to loop me or our events coordinator in on these conversations, we can do that.
Okay, anybody else, any other questions or thoughts?
I have just two sort of business and COVID response updates. So we have had a successful street seat program. So we have six businesses that have either expanded outdoor seating in their parking lots or in their parking spaces. And we're looking at extending that. It's supposed to expire the end of September through the end of November, at least, and working with public works and building and engineering kind of on what other issues might come up if we're going to expand it beyond that timeline.
So is that conversation about rain cover?
Yes, it is. What what are options in the public right of way around tents and heaters? And then the second is, we have, we'll have a third round of Milwaukee Business Relief Fund dollars. This is additional grant dollars from Business Oregon. So we are sending out checks next Friday for round two. That was about $35,000 and we'll be giving grants to about 15 businesses. And then we got additional funding from Business Oregon, $97,000 that will be in a third round, which I want to time that with Plaquemines County's third round. So that'll be late September, early October.
That's great news. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you, Allison and Rory. Yeah, continue to, you know, keep us apprised. And any thoughts you have, I think a dispersed umbrella parade concept like Porch Fest could work. I don't know how that works with the downtown businesses though, but I'm, you know, we're open to ideas for sure. Thank you very much. Lisa, did you have something?
Well, I was just going to mention, I mean, I feel it's kind of awkward because it's going to be in the regular session, but the Parks Foundation is doing this October campaign on Bring Play to Milwaukee Bay. And some of the downtown businesses, some of downtown restaurants are doing promotions as part of that. And so I'll reach out to Rory with more info on that. But there's definitely an interest from the Parks Foundation in partnering with businesses and finding ways that we can promote them and also, you know, be supporting the park development, you know, in one at once. So I'll reach out to Rory on that.
Great, thank you. All right. If that is that, then we should probably move on to Kellogg Creek, an update. And this will be presented by Neil Schulman, and I imagine Kelly will have input as well. Welcome, Neil.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you for the chance to give an update. It's been rescheduled a couple of times and obviously it's a little bit too bad that we can't do this in person, but it's been actually a really interesting process over the last several months, as many of you have been part of it. I have some slides to kind of go through. Should I just share? So I'm just going to share my screen. You can either, you can chime in with questions at any point. I'm not, you know, you don't need to wait till the end if you've got them. But I'm just going to kind of give you an update. And I think I should be able to, if I'm smart enough to figure out how to share my screen, then that's what I'll do. I might not be, this might take me a moment. Unless someone wants to, Scott, if you can remind me exactly how to do that.
If you have them open, you need to open them in another window, whatever. And then on the bottom, there should be a green button. And I made you and co-hosts.
Gotcha.
Then then it'll have you pick which screen you're going to share. So you want to select the slides. There you go.
So you can, you guys can see the slide there.
And you can either, if it's easier to leave it in this mode, we can see.
Oh, yeah.
Or you presenting. There you go. Okay, you're good.
So yeah, first of all, the big thing I wanted to say was say thank you. You know, the the campaign to remove Kellogg Dam has been going on long before I was the Executive Director of the Council, starting about two and a half years ago. So my hat is off to the folks who have been at this for far longer than I, and that includes Kelly and the Council and Mayor Gamba and a lot of community advocates, some of whom are on our board, like Steve Berliner and Dick Shook. And this is really a big project that goes a long way back into history, as you don't need me to tell you. And it's big and thorny and complex. Ironically enough, as you'll hear, I think we've got more, COVID has actually accelerated this project in some interesting ways. And the first thing I want to circle back to is like, really, this picture is kind of sums up a small part of the vision, I think, that we all have for it. It is about a free flowing Kellogg Creek and the return of salmon to our watersheds in Milwaukee and actually well up into Happy Valley. But it really has a lot of other collateral benefits that are bigger than that. So I'm just going to kind of give you an update. Things have changed, a lot of things have moved, but there are several things that haven't changed. So the first one is, this project is the number one priority for our watershed council. If we could wave our magic wand and get one thing done in all of the areas that we serve from Milwaukee down to Gladstone and out east, east of 205, this would be returning a free flowing Kelly Creek, Kellogg Creek, and bringing habitat back into the lake, salmon into the watershed, that would be it. It is also, of all the property, of all the infrastructure that ODOT owns in the entire state, this is their number one priority for fish passage. It is at the top of their list. It hasn't happened just because it's really complex and expensive. In all fish barriers in the entire North Valmont region, this one's number six. So it is the rated, these are ratings that are generated by ODOT and ODFW, and it is pretty much universally acknowledged that it needs to go. The reason that we're having this conversation now is really, I think, due to the, in a lot of ways, to the leadership of the city. And again, going back to before my time, there's been a lot of long term sticking with this project that's been critical to the momentum that we've had. So thank you. We also have public support that's strong. You know, I have talked, in the time I've been talking about this project for the last two and a half years, I've talked to exactly zero people who say they like the way it is, the lake, the way it is, or they think the dam should stay or whatever, you know, the, I think the public is with us. I'm going to come back to that in a little bit. The other thing that hasn't changed is there are multiple pathways to getting this project done. And it's always a little bit of a dance to figure out which one is the most promising. And it is obviously a complex project with a big price tag that involves a state highway and the Valmont River and sediment and mitigation banks. And there's just a lot of stuff here. And again, that's one of the ways that, one of the reasons it's something that seems like a no brainer to me when I'm, you know, after my second beer, has sometimes feels like it's taking a while. like it's taking a while. The benefits of removing the dam, a lot of it is driven by salmon because of their endangered species status, but in reality, there's several benefits. The Kellogg for Coho is, I think, fits really well on a bumper sticker and is catchy, but in reality, from a fish standpoint, it's Kellogg for Coho, Chinook, Steelhead, Cutthroat Trout and Lamprey and all the fish that migrate up and down the Willamette. They need lower Kellogg Creek as off-channel refugia in migration. They will have just trucked through all of the city of Portland and everything there. They need places to rest and feed. It is, that's one of the reasons it's so critical is that it's also going to be used as all the creeks in this stretch are by all the fish that run up the Saniam and the McKenzie and the mid, middle fork of the Willamette, all through the Willamette Basin. The other thing is that removing the dam obviously means fixing the temperature sink that's the lake. The lake is obviously too warm for a lot of aquatic life. And the chance to restore that is a huge benefit. It also will have benefits for climate resilience that existing, when that impoundment is gone, it can store more floodwaters. We obviously know we're going to be seeing more bigger winter storms. I was telling Councilor Beatty earlier today about, I was sitting down, or sitting down on Zoom with Jerry and Natalie yesterday, looking at flood, flood attenuation values of wetlands. And if we can really increase the amount of floodwaters that could be stored in what is now a full lake, that's going to only benefit the residents as well as the, as well as the watershed. And obviously, we have huge opportunities in terms of trail under crossings, connections to downtown, trails, max parks. That makes this a really good model for dam removal, and that has a couple of funders really interested because it would be so visible.
Neil, I would just add, in addition to the refugia for juvenile fish, which, I mean, we've talked about for several years now, I was, it was interesting at the last Regional Solutions meeting that several of the fish people spoke up to say, it's not just that, but it's important to get fish up the river, up, you know, migrating fish that are adult fish that are going up the river to spawn as well.
Yeah, yeah. And we do find them when we do see that, when we went on the four or five days during the year when the Willamette is high enough that the fish can jump the dam, they are found east of 205. They can make it past the 205 culvert up on Mount Scott Creek. The other thing that I was told by the folks at ODFW is, you know, if we were to dig around in the channel below the existing dam, when we get into construction, he wouldn't be surprised if we find lamprey there now buried in the sediment. They were, lamprey are, have been good at social distancing long before the rest of us. They come out at night, they bury themselves in the mud during the day. The area is considered a historic lamprey habitat. And obviously that, you know, is of, of interest to increasing interest, both to agencies and also to the tribes. So lots of reasons to do it. The end game that we're really after is what is the design? There is an existing bridge design from 2014 for the replacement bridge. There has never been serious design work done on what the restored lake and channel will look like. And then we, then there's funding mechanisms for really two things. One of them is removing the dam and replacing the bridge, and that is the biggest item, and that is obviously ODOT's bridge. And the second one is what is the funding mechanism for channel restoration? For the, you know, the restored channel, wetlands, basically what is now the lake? The, there's a couple, there's a whole bunch of funding scenarios, and they are all standing in different places, sometimes depending on what day you ask. But for the bridge and the dam replacement, the reason that this project has accelerated is because there's a lot of anticipation that at some point, there ha, will have to be federal infrastructure money, either through regular appropriations or through stimulus that is a result of the need, you know, the economic recovery from COVID. And the last time we had a really serious run at this project was during the ARRA funding in the stimulus package after the financial crash. And that was, as you have probably heard me say before, NOAA Fisheries have a bunch of money to fund a bunch of projects, way orders of magnitude that they, than they ever have. They funded their top 50 projects, and this was project number 51. So there's all, you know, so there, this is, there have been several taps on the shoulder saying, gee, we should be getting projects ready for stimulus funding. Because of the bridge, it could be in the, you know, in the Willie Sutton thing of, hey, why do you rob banks? It's because that's where the money is. There's probably going to be, it's safe to say, I think, that on the federal level and on the state level, there's always more money for transportation infrastructure than there is for natural resources. And this is a bridge project. The other thing that we've had conversations about with the delegation is just regular transportation authorization bills. That, that's a possibility as well, looking at sometime around 2022. Another thing that we are starting to, to look at is the 2022 Water Resources Development Act, and that's the Army Corps of Engineers Authorization. And that is basically, it's a pretty funky piece of legislation, but it definitely obviously has potential. On the state and local, regional and local level, obviously, this is ODOT's bridge where, and Kelly and I have talked about this, I think, a lot, and Mark was part of this last call. It is, it is a high priority for them from their fish passage, fish passage group, but the fish passage budget is pretty small. And really, it's how do we make this a priority within their, their bridge group and their larger pots of money? And where they have lots of other bridges that they think are also equally old or less stable. Metro is in the next year or so going to be refining its urban areas for the natural areas bond. And obviously, there is always, you know, obviously, state and local funding are in a world of hurt right now, but if there is state budget relief that comes through, comes through Congress at some point, as been discussed on the Hill, that may open up some opportunity on a state level. The good thing about projects like this is they do provide a lot of jobs. And there's actually, a lot of work was done on the, in the ARRA funding to really calculate how many kind of construction jobs would be involved in this project, and it's pretty significant. The lake restoration part of the project is a little bit of a different story. And the main opportunity there is it pencils quite well as a mitigation banking project under multiple credit markets that could, if the dam was gone, or if there was funding to remove the dam, could be done by a private party that are sniffing around, just like they were back in the, in the previous, you know, in the ARRA funding to say, gee, the dam is gone, we will, we might restore the lake and sell the credits. And, you know, that comes with, with some benefits. There's also, the lake restoration has a, you know, we don't have a real firm number on the cost, but it is enough that it could be potentially, if that didn't happen after, that only covered part of it, we could maybe cobble in some other public and private grants and things like that. The third part of it, that is always part of it, is obviously there's the planning and project development work, like we're doing now, and the designs and the, you know, all the lead up to that. And obviously, the city is, was kind of the first one to kind of pony up and say, hey, we want to make this possible. The PGE Habitat Support Fund and OWEB and the Resources Legacy Fund are all, and other folks are all players in this planning process. And mitigation bank developers may be willing to contribute to that, too. So a couple of things that have happened since we talked, and one of them is the stakeholder engagement process has been really going along. And again, the pandemic has been adding to that sense of opportunity and creating a real sense that we have a window. The mitigation credit firms are seeking projects right now. There are, a couple of them have finished up other big projects, and now they're looking for their next one. Interest rates are low for the foreseeable future. And there is, they kind of keep this information fairly proprietary, so I can't share the actual numbers. But the, again, that restoration of the lake pencils out really well. We've been working with a company called Cascade Environmental Group. That's John Runyon is the principal we've been working with. And part of what they bring to the table is they are a broker for those mitigation banks. So they're, you know, he's working with companies that are looking to do these projects. Thanks to, I think, you know, Larry, and thanks to Kelly, we've been able to convene the city and the governor's office and state agencies. And that has been an ongoing process that I think is helping with two things, and sometimes it's challenging and sometimes it's, but it, it really achieves two things. One of them is it added some clarity to the technical aspects of what the hoops this project needs to get through are. And the second one is it adds a sense of urgency. And having Jim McKenna from the governor's office, I think, get at the table and kind of helping, kind of poke people when needed, has been helpful thus far. We made a valiant last ditch attempt to get partial funding included in T2020. When T2020 took a haircut, when they took the vehicle registration out of it, that didn't happen. But the good news was that it did mean, it did kind of raise its profile within Metro, and that was helpful as well. So the Regional Solutions Group is basically the city, the council, the governor's office, and then ODOT, DEQ, DSL, and NOAA Fisheries. And they are the main kind of regulatory agencies that basically say, hey, this is what the project needs to do to get the go-ahead. And then the, the State Historic Preservation Office, Department of Energy and Business Oregon are kind of bit players in this, but they're still at the table and, you know, can tell us if we need to do anything to inventory historical, historic resources or that sort of thing.
Neil, a quick question. Is DSL Department of State lands?
Yes, Division of State lands. Yeah, so they, they are, they have regulatory authority over wetlands and things like that.
That's right, yeah. Okay, thanks.
So the other allies that have been part of this process, really, ODF and W wants to see this project happen, and they have their, their fish passage standards that they have to address. But kind of the subtext of everything they've said is, there's a couple of people that are very, very vested in making this happen and have been great for us to bounce ideas off of. It is on the radar screen for Merkley, Wyden and Schrader's offices. Senator Merkley's staff has really been taking the lead and started, again, they, you know, calling around the Hill to look into some of the different appropriations venues. The Metro Councilor Christine Lewis is definitely an ally. And again, she was trying to really shoehorn this into, into, into T2020. Karen Power is on, you know, has obviously had a baby recently, and she's been a little out of, you know, difficult, difficult to reach, obviously, for the time being, but she wants this to happen as well. She doesn't really know, you know, I think we need to give her, if we want her support, I think it'll be there, but we need to kind of give her the roadmap. There are other agencies that are really supportive of the project in terms of Claquemines Water Environment Services and CPRD have all done projects elsewhere in the watershed that they see as really kind of done in anticipation that someday the dam will be able to get out, get up, get, this dam will come out. So they're going to do projects in the upstream area that will then be, you know, provide habitat for fish, fish once the dam is gone. There's several consulting firms that are interested in this project, not just, but, you know, and have expressed a willingness to kind of do things, maybe a little, little bit less than, little stretch their scope than they would be for other work. OWEB has been funding the stakeholder engagement process, and we have another grant into them as well. The PGE Salmon Habitat Support Fund obviously has kind of come in to match the 25K that the city contributed with 50K. And then the Lower Columbia S3 Partnership is another interested nonprofit, and they have a fair amount of technical expertise. So there's a lot of folks that want to see it happen. I would say the big takeaways I would share from this regional solutions process are, you know, there's a bunch of regulatory things it's going to need to hit. From the ODOT standards, they want to obviously make sure that anything that happens has to meet their bridge and traffic standards and make sure that the channel that's underneath the bridge is not going to provide, you know, create too much scour around the foundations and all of that. ODFW and NOAA Fisheries are the guardians of fish passage standards. So whatever standards they, you know, we come, that are just come through the design, will have to meet both of their standards for fish passage and the standard, and the thing that they really want to see especially, and that we want to see as well, is not only that when we think of salmon, obviously, we tend to think of the big adults jumping up the waterfall, but we also, we really want to be, it's really, this is critical juvenile habitat, so things have to be passable to much smaller fish that aren't as strong swimmers. And that's, you know, that'll be, again, that's where a lot of the ecological value will come from this project as well. DEQ has basically said, what they don't want to see is that sediment that's behind the lake end up in the Willamette. It doesn't meet their qualifications for clean fill. In part of the design process that will, we're going to hopefully soon be, very soon be starting with the lake, it is going to be, I think, really important that we come up with a design that means that that sediment does not have to be carted away and disposed of at a, you know, at a landfill for contaminated sediment. That becomes just very expensive. If it still pencils out for a restoration mitigation banker, and we do that, that's okay, but there are plenty of designs where, like, and this happened at the Rainierson project, had a very similar issue, and they were just able to move some of the sediment, pile it outside of the channel where it wouldn't get hit by a flood, and show that they're developing a stable channel that is not going to move that sediment. And that's where a lot of the hydrologic modeling comes in. DSL is looking at wetland changes and impacts. They're going to want to know, not only are we removing any wetlands, but also what is our conversion of wetlands from a lake into things like forested wetland or emergent wetland, which we will definitely do, that's obviously part of the point. They're also looking at, you know, they're going to be the guardians on, hey, is there anything in here for other rare species that needs to be preserved in part of the design? And the most likely species would be painted turtles and red-legged frogs. So part of this design will be basically saying, if there is areas where we know we have those species in the lake now, how do we do this project in a way that doesn't disturb that rare habitat to build the salmon habitat? And if so, what do we have to do about it? So kind of the core questions that we've been wrestling with throughout this are, number one, what will the restored lake bed look like? So we argue, you know, we, we, obviously, the push, the immediate push is to that design that will provide clarity for these agencies to basically say, yeah, that looks like something that could be permitted. Because in reality, what has, and what came out of the first set of meetings was they were like, well, yeah, we can tell if you bring us, you got to bring us something to say, hey, then we can say, yes, this is, yes or no. So we've spent a lot of time on some of these study proposals for this design, really clarifying with these agencies that the level of detail that this is going to show is sufficient for them to be able to provide some form of evaluation before final permitting. Second thing is, how do we get the project close enough to being shovel-ready for stimulus funds? And this is the Groundhog Day part of this project that I think everybody feels a little bit, where in the ARRA funding, the reason it didn't get funded was it wasn't close enough to shovel-ready. And things tend not to get, you know, usually, the challenge is finding the money to get it ready to, for shovel-ready and then not, not having it sit too long, that that design is no longer usable or that cost estimate is too old. And so there's a, that's always been the, the chicken and the egg syndrome of this project. And that's obviously why we're kind of moving forward with this design component. The third thing is really just, how do we make this a priority for ODOT? Again, it's a priority for their fish folks. It's not a priority for their, you know, for their larger infrastructure and their big dollars. And I think we've spent a lot of time, we'll probably spend more time, just And I think we've spent a lot of time, we'll probably spend more time, just figuring out how to, how to make it more of a priority for them. And there's a couple of thoughts that I'll share with you about that as well. So as far as the next steps go, the design of the restored channel has a budget of about 100K, 75,000 of professional services. And basically, the general scope is design alternatives and a preferred alternative for what that restored lake and channel will look like. What's the fish passage going to be? What's the channel cross-section and slope? And what's the hydrologic model, modeling say? Are the sediments going to stay in place? Based on the 2014 bridge design, because that already exists. And, but making, but touching base with ODOT and making sure ODOT isn't changing that. The, the other thing is, and this is how, one of the ways that we're trying to break this not shovel-ready enough, is giving us a 12 to 18 month pathway to say, here are the things you need to do to be able to drive, to dive into the final design and implementation. And basically having a schedule and a list of tasks and that will oftentimes, you know, that was basically, that will hopefully provide any doubters about whether or not this thing can really happen, if it's funded, to say, yes, it can. We know what we need to do. The designs that come out of this restored, that of this process will also be our main, a really powerful vehicle, I think, for communicating what the future is going to look like. And I think one of the challenges that we've had is we haven't had those, here's a drawing of what this could look like someday, you know, when this is done, there's a trail going on, you know, people know there's a trail going under the bridge and the lake will be gone and the lake won't fill with cyanobacteria. But what's it going to look like? And I think that's a really important tool for communication, both with funders and the public, as well as with other stakeholders. The other thing we want to do in this restored channel is really make sure that we leverage mitigation bank opportunities as much as we can. And that basically means we're going to be asking whoever the consultant is to work with some of the brokers of these bank developers or the companies themselves, because the finer points of design are going to affect how many credits are issued to a project. Things like inundation period. So if it's more inundate, if it's inundated for a certain number of, the, certain number of days during a certain season of the year, shallow water habitat, it's more valuable to fish and therefore, under the various mitigation banks, whether it's wetlands banks or Portland Harbor mitigation credits, you get more credits. And the more credits you get, the more money the banker makes and the more money they're therefore able, willing to put into the project on the, on the front end. So having that into the design, involved in the design process is going to be, going to be important.
Neil, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Back on that previous slide. So do you, do you have the full $100,000 secured and you are moving ahead with getting the professional services?
We're almost there. Yeah, I'll, I'll get to that. I think that was actually the next slide. Yeah.
Before you, before you go there.
Yeah.
Back to the other slide. Okay. So design alternatives and preferred alternatives. So a big point of discussion at the last Regional Solutions meeting was, do we have to blow up the basalt dike or not? How much of it do we remove or not? So, I mean, those are huge, could be very dramatically different alternatives if that's, if that's what we're going to study. And I guess I'm wondering, is there a question about that that needs to be answered first? Or is that what this study is going to tell us?
Yeah, I think that would have to be answered early in this study. Because that is, and that's kind of, I think, but that is, that is a good question. There's a little bit of background, especially for folks who weren't on the last call. You know, so the bridge sits on the dam, there's this basalt dike under the dam, there's a lot of, of all the studies that have been done about like, how solid is that, all of that structure, being that it was built in, you know, 1858 and reinforced, and there is probably a little basalt sitting there that predates, you know, that was naturally there. What is, what are the options for getting fish through that? Do they have to remove it? Can they create a slot in it? I'm not an engineer and I'm not going to play one on TV, but that is the kind of question that some of, that I'm anticipating that there might be either a, either a quick, hopefully either a quick, yes, we need to get rid of it, or maybe we don't. And then there might be a couple of design alternatives that say, hey, can we notch it? Can we go around it? You know, those sorts of things. Can't, probably can't go around it. The, the other background here that's, I think, important to recognize, and this is kind of an ongoing thing with ODOT, is in a lot of conversations I've had with ODOT, they, in, they get sticker shock about this project and they say, gee, should we, maybe there's something we can do, just like lowering the existing dam and building a channel up to it. Those are, have basically been, that conversation's always a little challenging because they have, those, there was an alternatives analysis of some of those types of solutions done by the Army Corps of Engineers before my time, I want to say 2014. And that's when they landed on this current design and said, yeah, no, it's full removal, we're getting rid of the dam, what we need to do. The, the reason for that is that none of those other alternatives that they came, that the Army Corps came up with made past NOAA's fish passage standards. So I am not eager, I don't, to, A, spend a whole lot of time revisiting that. I think we've, that's why that design exists. And second of all, the bridge is 86 years old. It has 20 years life of life on it, according to ODOT. It's going to probably take at least five if we do this thing now, on the best case It may be foolish to spend a few million dollars on something that's just going to be, need to be replaced again in, at the worst case scenario, or best case scenario in another 15 years. So, and obviously with the potential for federal funding, hopefully, you know, ODOT will become a little less concerned about the price tag if it's not their money. But that is kind of part of that overall discussion. So Lisa, thanks for bringing that up. I think there is a lot of turnover that's happened in a lot of agencies since this last conversation. So sometimes it does seem like we are revisiting topics that were dealt with before.
Well, I was going to say, even the idea of the notching it out and building a channel up to it was, I mean, it might have been studied in 2014, but it was also floated just a couple of years ago. And I, it's my understanding that ODFW found it unacceptable.
Yeah. And again, I think that's appropriate. Yeah, but I think, yeah, ultimately, I think if we are going to, I mean, ultimately, I think we are looking at really trying, we're going to land, but again, hopefully sooner and with less. If they have to dig into existing rock that was there that is not part of the bridge structure, I don't think that, there's no, not a lot of data from before 1858 to say, gee, you know, this wasn't a nat, nothing indicates this was a natural barrier. So I can't answer that in a little more detail until I get a little more information back from folks. But I think that's part of what we'll have to get, the first part of this process, I think, will hopefully, will, should address that. To go back to Councilor Heisey's question, so of the, we have raised 75 of the 100K. The, um, the computer is frozen. Sorry, give me a moment. There we go. Again, thanks to the city for being the first to say we want this to happen, because that really gave us the matching funds to go seek funds from, from PGE, which we've been awarded. We have a, the remainder request in to the Resources Legacy Fund, which is a conversation we've been talking with them for the better part of this project. Their board is, or their, their senior staff, it's at a, a mouth that doesn't need to go to their board, their senior staff is meeting on this on the 24th. So hopefully we'll know soon and hopefully the news will be good. If that leaves us a gap, then we have a $75,000 request that we have submitted to OWEB, but their decision, their decisions are all pushed back now into March due to the COVID impact on lottery dollars. So I would hate to, I don't want to delay that, this project until March. So hopefully we'll have good news before then. There's other sources we could also go to, you know, if we get the thumbs down from Resources Legacy Fund, or we could just basically decide that the council is going to dip into its reserves for some other parts of it if we have to. But that's a whole nother set of discussions. We have received two proposals from consulting firms, both of which have done work on the site before. So, and there are two other folks who have said they're going to submit proposals. So two, you know, the two that we have received are from Geo Engineers and from OTAC. OTAC obviously did the, the second bridge in the park and also did the Pringle Creek Dam removal in Salem. And Geo Engineers is, some of their staff actually used to work on OTAC and worked on that project, and they've all done a lot of fish passage projects. And again, both of their proposals kind of passed muster with these agencies as far as kind of saying like, yes, this would provide us most of what we need.
Neil, I just want to jump in here. We're at 5 o'clock. And we actually, so we've gone to the end of our time allotment. We have about five more minutes. I just wanted to give you a time check.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I will speed it up. I can talk about this all day long. We've talked about most of the things that the design scope is going to hit. The main thing I wanted to generate is, A, it will give us a cost estimate for the lake restoration component as well as, but it's really going to cover a big area. It's not just, it's going, going to go, basically going to go from Oatfield Road to the Willamette. So they're really kind of treating, these proposals are really treating the, starting in the free-flowing area above the dam, going all the way out to the Willamette. The, so next steps, and this, then I'll be wrapping up. So we're continuing to work with ODOT. They have committed to updating their 2014 cost estimate, which, but really, we are also trying to help them prioritize it. And we're trying to really communicate with them that not only does this give them a chance to update aging infrastructure with Uncle Sam's money, but it also gives them an opportunity, and it actually gives the city the same opportunity, potentially to meet their other mitigation needs. Because if they invest in this project, that, that can go in any number of ways toward basically ODOT's mitigation that they have to do for plenty of their other projects, especially if T 2020 passes and they have mitigation needs in the 909 corridor. And a frequent way that these mitigation banking agreements work is, and this happened in Gladstone, where the developer makes, basically makes a deal with various parties, and it could be ODOT and the city that they get cheap, and/or the city, that they get cheap mitigation credits as part of the deal for any future mitigation that they need, may need to do, either because of a past project or a future project. We're going to obviously continue to work with the governor's office and to continue to poke ODOT and hopefully move them forward. There's a lot of conversations that'll obviously be happening on multiple levels. We're tracking federal funding. We'll, that is, kind of seems to always move in the, we don't know what's happening to, oh my God, it's moving really quickly. That's not secret to any of you. The bank development process, I'll just hit on this really quickly. The, one of the reasons this project is attractive is it qualifies for three different credit trading platforms. It is also, the bank developers are probably going to be approaching the city soon, just like happened in the previous process, that, looking to say, hey, we're going to start, want to start to kind of scope this project. And Kelly, I think maybe you and I, John and I should find a follow-up with a phone call about that. The, there's a couple of places where I think the city engagement will be really critical. Again, first of all, thank you. This is not, this would not be at this point without the cities kind of continuing to push this project. One of them is creating political, or helping us to create the political urgency at the state, ODOT, metro, federal level. When we, again, hopefully soon, start to say, we are going to hire a contractor to do this design, I would definitely like the city to be part of that process. Obviously, the city owns the vast majority of the lake bed. The design has to be something you are all comfortable with. So we want definitely your insight into who the best consultant might be. And obviously, throughout this process, Kelly and Tessie and Michael Adams and Jerry have all been really instrumental in this process, and that will probably continue to be the case. I think Mayor Gambo said a while back when we started this, kind of reviving this project, that, hey, the public support will be there when we need it, but we need to have a path forward. I think we may be getting to the point in the next six months to a year, or maybe sooner, where that public support becomes a way to kind of help mobilize whoever needs to be mobilized, whether it's ODOT or some sort of funding mechanism to let, we might be wanting to start thinking about communicating more with the public about the status of this project as it starts to develop a little more clarity. And I will stop there, because I know I'm out of time, and just make sure there aren't any more questions.
I have one for you, Neil. So I, I really appreciate how much effort you've put into lining up all of the details in this and making sure that all of the right people are paying attention. I think you've done a great job to, to position this project. The one, the one place where I have real questions is, you know, I, I hear the, the two pieces of ODOT sort of on different pages, and, and that seems to be historically how ODOT has felt about this project. And honestly, I can't completely blame them, knowing the state of the bridges all over the state.
Yeah.
I understand that, I understand why a bridge that's got 20 years of life left and it seems pretty darn good. But I, I want to know, I feel like some sort of legislative pressure is going to be necessary ultimately, or not even, I don't even mean to say it as pressure, but legislative clarification for ODOT, that, that this is a project that they need to really step up and move. Have you thought about when will be the time to do that? I'm hearing from what you're saying right now that it's probably not this legislative session, but I'm wondering if now is the time to start that conversation with representative power and, and see where, you know, what the landscape looks like if we do it and try and do it in a short session? It's not really a short session topic. I think it's probably needs to be a regular session, but what are your thoughts about all that?
My short, I agree with you entirely. It's time to start sort of putting those pieces in. And Kelly and I had a conversation about that when it appeared that the stimulus package that included state and local government relief looked more imminent. I, the fear I think we have now would be that it would become a, the main story is going to be, there's no money. And then the second story is going to be, there's no money. And the third story is going to be, there's no money. And the fourth story is going to be anything else. So I can see, I'm a little cautious about not having an answer to that unless it becomes like, hey, we have word of funding, we need a 30% state and local match. How about getting, let's bring the federal funds in? You know, I think then, so I agree with you, it's not necessarily a short session thing. I also, in the conversations I have had with Jim McKenna, I think, you know, like, there are potential, he is interested in, you know, the, in, in pushing it on the govern, from the governor's office too. And that could be through something in the session or something in the, you know, just something in kind of their, but internal prioritization. Think you, I think you're exactly right. It just is really hard to, my own sense is that right now we just get lost in all the, in the multiple my own sense is that right now we just get lost in all the, in the multiple crises that are going on.
Yeah.
And it's definitely, it's a great project for recovery because of the employment numbers attached to it, to a project of this magnitude. It's a little harder to sell during, when, you know, folks are looking at 30% cuts. So.
Right. Well, and I wasn't even necessarily meaning a legislative measure that required a dollar signs to be attached to it because I don't think those are, those are not going to fly in the current legislative session. And I don't know that the state's finances are going to look a lot better two years from now either. It was, it was more, I guess it was more of a broad, is there something that we could get done legislatively that would make it clear to ODOT that on this particular project, there is a need to pay more attention to the fish side and the habitat side than the transportation side of the equation. I'm not saying this very well, and it's an open question. I'm not.
Yeah.
I, you know.
No, and I think you're, I think you're exactly right. It's worth exploring. I think I would need, you know, I kind of need to noodle on that and really kind of strategize on exactly what we're asking for.
I actually have a thought in that, that I wanted to make sure that is on the table while you're thinking about this.
Neil, before the mayor jumps in, I'm just going to turn off your PowerPoint, Neil, so that it's easier for Zoom conversation if they can see each other.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to turn that off. Sorry.
So, two things. One, that is technically a box culvert. And ODOT has a fund system for the removal and replacement of box culverts. This would eat up an entire cycle's worth of that fund at the state level. However, it is also, I think, if I recall correctly, their number one box culvert project.
It's their number one project, fish passage one.
Yeah, they just keep not doing it because it would eat up an entire year.
Right.
So that would be maybe the legislative pressures to say, okay, you skipped this one six times, even though it's your number one, use the entirety of your, of your box culvert fund. So that's one piece. The other piece, you said that if there were mitigation projects for the metro process on McLaughlin, perhaps some of that money could go into this. I would counter that if there are mitigation projects anywhere in metro, that the money could go into this. We, I mean, the last time it had work done on it, it was for the.
Any side.
Yeah, any side, exactly, which is nowhere near. Move on.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 it doesn't have to be from McLaughlin. I had a very interesting preliminary conversation with folks in the city of Portland, and this is something I say with great caution because it's very preliminary. But one of the things that could really open up metro, you know, ODOT's mitigation creativity or general mitigation creativity is right now, projects done in the city of Portland have to be mitigated in the city of Portland. There is some interest in opening that up to upstream projects because they know that they can't get the ecological outcomes they want in the Willamette River just within the city of Portland. They're running out of mitigation sites. If that were to be opened up, then all of a sudden, we're talking about mitigation for like the Rose Quarter Project or things like that. Yes, mitigation can happen anywhere.
Yes. So I think that's something that we should be having conversations, shall we say, with metro about, so that we make sure that we're kind of on the top of that list.
Yes.
Anyway, we do absolutely have to move on. We are 10 minutes, 11 minutes past our drop dead.
Oh, introductions to do before we can get to our next thing. So.
I apologize for running over, but there's a lot of depth here, and I really appreciate the city's involvement in this in so many ways.
Thank you, Neil, for all your hard work in this.
I'm going to hand it over to Leila. She actually has intros, not me.
Yeah, thanks. And I'll be quick. Mayor, councilors, it's nice to see everyone. Leila Alman, your community development director. I'm joined here by our two new planning staff. And so I thought I'd take this opportunity to just briefly introduce them both, and maybe they can both just say hello and introduce themselves briefly. But we have our new planning manager, Laura Weigle, has joined us. This is her first day. We moved her first day out due to the smoke in the buildings, but we were able to get her onboarded today. So I thought she could do the CPIC presentation next, and we'll just sort of, so Laura is here. And Laura, maybe you could just quickly introduce yourself and just give the council a quick background, and then I'll go ahead and introduce Janine next. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see your faces. I'm Laura Weigle. I'm really looking forward to meeting you all and working with you all. I have been working out of the city of Hillsborough for the last six years as the planning, long range planning manager. I helped do the update of their comprehensive plan and worked on their transportation system plan and worked on the concept plan for an urban growth boundary expansion. So it was a great six years out there in Hillsborough. Prior to that, I worked for the city of Lake Oswego, where I also helped update the comprehensive plan, and I also worked on the transportation system plan. And additionally, I, when I first started at Lake Oswego, I worked with the neighborhood associations, of which there were 22. So I'm really familiar with neighborhood associations and working with the community. And that's actually the part I really enjoy the most, is working with community members and building relationships with people and learning more about how they want to see the city change or be different in the future. So I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you so much. I look forward to working with you in the future.
You're welcome. It's good to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't stop smiling. I'm so happy she's here.
Yay.
Welcome, Laura. And next up, we have Ms. Janine Gates. Janine joins our team as our new assistant planner. She's been here a little bit longer than Laura. She's in her third week. So I will pass the baton over to Janine to say a few things.
Hello, everyone. I'm Janine Gates from Portland. Have spent most of my career working for the city of Portland, Ormona County, serving commissioners. So it's nice to come to a city and working planning and get really deep into that. I recently graduated my master's in urban planning, so I'm excited to be here. Nice to meet you all.
Good to have you onboard as well. Thank you.
We are fully teamed up. And with that, I will pass the baton over to Vera to walk us through an update of where we're at with the comprehensive plan implementation. So thank you for the time to introduce our new team.
Cool. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, councilors, I'm also really excited to have Laura and Janine on the team. So we are fully staffed up. It's very exciting. I'm here to, again, Vera Colley, sorry, senior planner, I'm here to present an update, a project update for the comprehensive plan implementation project. And I am going to share my screen if Scott will let me. Oh, he has let me. Oh, my gosh. Okay. So we'll go over here.
And as she's doing that, I'll just throw out there, we are running a little behind, and we do need a few, like solid 15 minutes before the regular session. So if I can throw out 5:45 as the time.
Oh, I was going to stick with my 5:30 unless the council had more questions. So, yeah, the gauntlet's been thrown. So I'm going to try and stick to the schedule. Again, I'm here to present the comprehensive plan implementation project update. And this project, there we go. The creating and supporting housing opportunities has been a goal for the city, for the city council, primarily middle housing opportunities. So our recently adopted comprehensive plan, in addition to running combination with House Bill 2001, which was passed by the legislature in 2019, talks about expansion of these middle housing options. To that end, council has moved us forward with the implementation, first phase of implementation of the comprehensive plan. This phase one of implementation focuses on housing, but it also includes related code changes to parking requirements in residential areas and tree protection preservation on private property. Those three things go, definitely go together. And then the outcome of the code amendments will balance the city's goal for 40% tree canopy and implementation of those housing policies from the comp plan as well as compliance with House Bill 2001. So what have we been doing to date? We have a signed contract with Herb's Works, who is our lead consultant on a multidisciplinary consultant team. We are in process with a code audit. That code audit is to identify existing code conflicts with both plan policies and with House Bill 2001 requirements. Staff, prior to even having a signed contract, staff was working on that code audit. And so we provided a massive spreadsheet to the consultant team for, so they have a really good foundation of where to start on their code audit. And now the consultant has all of that, and they are working on that now. We also have our comprehensive plan implementation committee. That's our resident committee for this project. Meeting number two of the CPIC is on Thursday night. As part of your packet, we included the packet, including the agenda and other materials that CPIC will be discussing on the 17th. We've also scheduled out the whole calendar of meetings for CPIC. So they're on the city calendar. So they're all out through, through May, I believe, is the, is the last meeting. So those are all on the CPIC's calendars as well. And the big push on the CPIC meeting on Thursday is going to be staff getting folks up to speed a bit on how our code works as it relates to this project. So we're going to kind of do a crash, a 30-minute crash course for folks that might not be that familiar with how our code works for development standards, design standards, just kind of how the process works when related to permitting for housing. And then we're going to identify just a couple of real world examples of some of the identified barriers to housing development in the city from a code perspective. What we want is to kind of give the CPIC members a bit better foundation in anticipation of the code audit discussion. We can sort of throw the code at people, but I think what we want to do is sort of suss out sort of some of the key details for the committee members. So they're at least familiar with how our code works as it relates to review of housing development. And then the big, and then a big part, or bigger part of the CPIC meeting, we'll be talking about the public engagement plan that we are working on. We've gone back and forth a couple of times with the consultant team. And so that's a big part of the bulk of the discussion of the CPIC meeting is going to be about that public engagement plan to make sure that we're getting it right as far as how we want to draw the community in, making sure that we're doing the right kind of outreach. So the consultant team will lead that discussion as part of the meeting. And the last slide I just wanted to share was sort of a general project timeline. So we're in the code and audit analysis section right now. Here we are in September. The next phase will be our concept development phase, where we're going to be talking about a couple, three to five alternatives for how, some concepts of how we might approach some of these code changes and how we want to think about incorporating these, the housing opportunities, tree preservation and parking into, into the code. So we'll be doing that through a series of meetings sort of in-house with staff and with technical, technical committee meetings as well as the CPIC, and then bringing that out to community review in the new year and community testing. So that's where we're going to be testing out these various concepts with the community to kind of get a sense of where the community is on the topic and so that we can pull all of that information from our public engagement on the community review of the concepts and start crafting code around what those concepts are. Of course, embedded in here will be work sessions with the various boards and committees, including the city council and the planning commission. And then we'll take those draft amendments. We'll start working through those in work sessions and so on. We'll reconcile the code and make sure that we've caught all of the different parts of the code as we're working through those amendments. And then we'll have those final amendments in the early summer. This general timeline is doable. It's aggressive, was the word I heard someone use earlier this week, and I think that's true. But we have a plan and we, we think we can get this done in the time allotted. Part of the timeline is governed by the grant that we received from DLCD. We received, it was 95,000, now it's 92.5 for this project. They need to see adoption ready language in the first week of June. So adoption ready, not adopted. So we can do a little more tweaking after that standpoint, but adoption ready at the beginning of June. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us. We have a really great consulting team. We have a really great project management team on the inside, and we've got several, the staff department, of the city departments have signed on to help work with us on this project. So I'm confident we're going to get this done. And we're going to do a really great job for the city. So I will leave it at that. I'm happy to keep the screen shared if there are questions that I can answer. I see that I'm nine minutes early. So we've got some time for some questions.
Not that you're bragging.
Not at all. Listen, this is my third meeting today that I ended early, so I'm pretty stoked about it.
So what's the expected date for the HB 2001 regulations?
So they are looking at November, or by the end of this year, that they're going to have those, the model code and those, they've already issued sort of the draft for public comments. I can stop sharing if that's, if I can figure out how to get out of here and stop doing that, stop share. So we'll have a sense of what they're doing as we're working on our stuff too. So we won't be too, we won't be too far, we won't be far ahead of them at all. So we'll make sure that we're going to be in line with what their regulations call for.
I had a question for you, Vera, around, speaking of timelines that don't, that do line up and then timelines that don't line up. Now, we're just beginning our process of doing our equity and inclusion conversations. We just got the feedback in our council packet for the regular session from those listening sessions. So I'm curious what, what sort of outreach and engagement work will be done around CPIC's efforts to the BIPOC community and what that looks like in the engagement plan.
It's actually, it's a big part of the engagement plan, actually. And so right now, the draft has called out, in fact, we have a couple of meetings scheduled this week to make sure that we are, and that's part of the discussion also with, with CPIC as well, is to make sure that we are doing the right kind of outreach. And it's a living document. That's one of the things that the consultants were really clear about, that, you know, we've got this sort of final draft, but it's one of these, it's an iterative process to make sure that we're sort of checking back and making sure that we're getting the messages out correctly. We have a meeting tomorrow to talk about stakeholders and sort of the initial kind of stakeholder outreach. We are working with Kelly's, Kelly Brooks' group, the community engagement team. We're talking with Ann's group, with the DEI committee. So we've got a lot of different people that are helping us plug in to make sure that we've got the right folks and the right communities participating in the process. So it's sort of a loose answer. I don't have all, because we're still finalizing all of that, but we are, it's critical to us to make sure that we, that we are reaching everyone in the, in the community and that we're encouraging all of that participation. So we're trying to be as flexible and as nimble as we can with our outreach. So we have a lot of different layers of outreach that we're going to be doing to make sure that we can meet people where they need us to be for those conversations.
I just wanted to give Vera some extra credit. She actually has been reaching out to me for the last couple of months on this. This is something she's taking very seriously. And I really appreciate her leadership on it.
Great. Thank you.
I noticed on the agenda for the CPIC this next Thursday, on Thursday, that it's fairly introductory, getting that group up to speed on where we're at. Do you think it will be the meeting in November that you start to dig into actual code concepts?
So the November meeting is going to, the bulk of that is going to be the map and the code audit work as well as code concepts. So we're going to be, and then in December will be the code concepts as well. So there's probably going to be a combination. So it's the first part of the, of the meeting on Thursday until about 6:45 or so is sort of that introductory code sort of coaching, I guess I would call it. And then the bulk of it's going to be the public engagement plan. So then the code concepts and the map and code audit, that's November, December, will be those two meetings. Yeah. It's important, I think, because we want to make sure that we are tying our code audit and sort of that identification of conflicts and barriers, that we're tying that not only to House Bill 2001, but to our comp plan policies and goals. And so we want to make sure that everyone is, everyone by that, the community understands that we're tying this project to our comp plan. And so we need to really surgically go through our code and let people see, you know, how that mismatch, because there's a lot of mismatch in our code and the comp plan. And we want to make sure that folks are. in our code and the comp plan. And we want to make sure that folks are, are really clear about, about that, that we're not just writing this code for fun. We are looking at our code against these established and adopted policies and goals. So it's really important that people understand, I think, that foundation for the project.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, has there been any thought to doing printed spiral bound copies of the new comp plan? I would personally like one, but I also think that might be a good thing for the CPIC members to have.
In fact, we have, one CPIC member did request such a thing and we did produce that. So I can, I'll make a note to myself that at the CPIC meeting, we, because I know I sent links out to it and so on. And that generated one request for a printed version, but, but we can, we can actually ask people and proactively find out if people want that printed version. Counselor Beatty, are you requesting a printed version? Is that what I'm hearing right now? Okay. Great. Okay. Yeah, we will, we can get that for you. I like how you did that. That was good. That's, that's okay. Sure.
Well, I mean, I think for the CPIC and for us, it's going to be, I mean, I expect it to be a tabbed thing of, I'm going back to it for, you know, it's, it is a living document and we need to be referring back to it, so.
Yep. No, I'll, I'll grab, get, we'll get a head count at the meeting and we'll get right on it. I used to work at a Kinko's, so.
It will never be FedEx. It will always be Kinko's.
Only, it's only ever Kinko's, yeah.
Any other questions on for Vera? I really appreciate her leadership on this and making it happen and getting it done so quickly. So thank you very much, Vera.
You're very welcome. Thanks very much, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, I think we are adjourned on the work session. We'll come back into the regular session at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Is that a new link?
That's a new link and you should all got the panelist login, but it's also in the calendar, right, for the public and I'll put you on the panel.